This is an unedited recording of the full meeting. Public comments are held at the end of the meeting. Thank you for watching. Please hit the like button and leave a comment. It really helps the algorithm. If you haven't already, please subscribe to the channel and hit the notification bell to get all the upcoming videos from our channel. Thank you and enjoy the video.
Call us, Peter Orme, please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a mode of silence. Please take your seats. Roll call, please. Ister.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Brochus.
Here.
Barnhart.
Here.
Martina.
Here.
Uh, there is an executive session held prior to tonight's council meeting for personnel. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment on agenda items at this time? All right, uh, moving on, uh, code update.
Joyce.
We've issued sixteen citations of the last meeting, ten placards for various anti-liberty violations, one inspection which passed, and one reinspection which passed. We are also notifying all property owners that their housing permit may be in jeopardy of suspension per the city code one thirty-four dash thirteen B if the applicant has any delinquent taxes, sewer or water fees, or outstanding fines and costs to code enforcement. They could lose their license.
Anything else, Councilman Barnhart, you'd like to add? Or she summed it up quite well.
She summed it up quite well. There's something better in discussion when we come back.
All right, sounds good. Uh, there is no old business or... Oh, go ahead.
Um, that I'm going to add. Sure. Uh, well, I didn't say anything. So, Joel, correct me if I'm wrong, but I had asked Joel last week, um, about the public too. So, uh, I had voted on the solar ordinance and I want to formally change my vote to an abstention. Um, I don't think it's always about what is wrong. I think it's about what could appear to be wrong. And as being employed by the county, I think I should have abstained from the vote. So I'd like to formally report that as an abstention.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, there is no other old business. Now, moving on to new business, uh, three-year CDVG engineering agreement for CSE. Jamie.
Thank you. Um, we put out proposals for an RFP for, to get proposals for your CDVG three-year engineering contract. We received three proposals, CES Engineering, South Shaker Engineering, and Peter Consultants. These, I did a review and shared them with Derek and my recommendation is that you award your three-year CDVG agreement to CES Engineering. Thanks on there. Our release will be there for both.
Questions, anyone? All right, so I'll make the motion for the three-year CDVG agreement with CES Engineering. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes. Uh, moving on, Councilman Barnhart, a city fund for fire department consolidation.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to the, the fire department twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, since it wasn't budgeted, if we could click from the reserve, we're gonna need that for consolidation.
I'll second.
Is that under that mouth issue? One next to that January. I think Kevin said January.
January.
Sorry.
Rick can wait till January first? Okay.
Yeah, ours was just our current. So we don't, we got a lot of money, but we don't want any.
That's what we like to hear.
We're rocking the tablet.
All right, I'll second. Martina.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister. Uh, Councilman Barnhart, you just keep going.
All right, uh, the, uh, advertise on that for, in the first reading for the vacant property ordinance. I'd like to table that until, uh, a later date until small council members in the mayor has a chance to review it and go over it.
Second, the table. Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
I'd like to amend and advertise the nuisance abatement ordinance.
Second. Martina.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Keep going.
Uh, I'd like to amend, make a motion to amend ordinance one oh six.
Second. Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Keep going.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty, resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six to remove the properties. I don't have to tell the addresses of the property, just...
I think you do addresses and that's it.
All right, all right. Ten thirty-eight Chestnut, six twenty, six fifty North Eighth, seven fifty North Eighth, four sixteen, four eighteen South Fourth, to remove them from the nuisance list.
Second. Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-seven to add properties to the nuisance list on twenty-five oh twelve, one thirty-four, one thirty-six, one thirty-eight, Packer Street, seven forty-five Edison Avenue, three twenty South Fourth, three forty-four, three forty-six South Fourth, seven hundred, seven hundred and two Susquatch Avenue, seven zero six Susquatch Avenue.
Second. Ister.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Make a motion, resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-eight, to update the public nuisance list.
Second. Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
All right, uh, these are just announcements, so they're in here. Uh, we have letters of interest in the following board positions from the redevelopment authority, board, uh, David Merz, Virginia Roach, June Sacks, Jared Sacks, Ron Garinger, Robert Howe, and Sue Sarfine. Uh, other letters of interest for the Planning Commission of David Merz and Joe Bartelo. Uh, letters of interest for the municipal board. Uh, Kevin Truitt did withdraw his name, but, uh, after this was printed out, Jerome Alex submitted his letter of interest and letter of interest for the blank review committee of Jeff Rosa Husky, June Sacks, and Jared Sacks. Uh, Councilman Ister.
Yes, I know we're, a couple months ago, we decided to give the private fourth point two Martin Street to the redevelopment authority. Who will help me out? What we ever...
No, we voted on it. What I wanted to do was, we were revoting the municipal law. I said, no, we probably ought to give Josh permission to sign the DVD so that that was...
I'll make that a formal motion, sir.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilman Martina.
Oh, I'm going to ask that we table this till Joe makes the necessary changes and then we'll work out in two weeks.
Second. Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Savage.
I will make a motion for the approval to advertise a new first reading uh, for revisions that were made to the budget for, uh, public review. Period, I'm sorry, for public review, period.
Second. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I also make a motion for the approval of abstracts and vouchers for the general fund in the amount of eighty-two thousand, seven dollars, fifty-nine cents, uh, private grants in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, six hundred nine, I'm sorry, twelve thousand, six hundred nine dollars, forty-seven cents, and payroll in the amount of seventy-two thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Sir. Martina.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Uh, moving on to discussion, Councilman Barnhart.
Uh, I wanted to make everybody aware that the public nuisance abatement ordinance, which was enacted last March, and we're starting to actively pursue that. We have sent out ten letters where people are getting points out of the ten letters. Four of them got twelve points, which put them automatically on the nuisance list. One got eight and others got four. So be aware of, uh, property owners and who you're renting to because, uh, uh, I can't tell you who are, but, but just be careful who you're renting to. Make sure you do all your due diligence, uh, because that could put you on a nuisance list.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Barnhart. Does anybody have any questions on that? All right, uh, moving on here to the fee schedule. I know as we're fini- finishing the year here, we're getting our final fees. I know there were some discussions on the ball fields, softball fields, and other types of things that people may need, you know, things for like road closures, tables, chairs, whatever, for different things. So, you know, we just did a mock thing there, it's in your thing, about, uh, different fees that we could charge. So I don't want to hear everyone's thoughts for that things in the back. Oh, I have here, I'm sorry, pass it around here, but let me think, that's my fault. So, I mean, there's different fee, the, the fees vary from depending if you're gonna use the ball fields with lights, without lights. If, you know, anytime there's a road closure, DPW has to go up there, close off, I mean, not close off there, but drop off materials, pick them up, garbage cans, tables, and sometimes things come back damaged. Some things don't even come back at all. And the city's eating that cost every time this happens. So maybe you have to have some type of discussion to, if someone wants to do these things, there has to be a fee because you don't get, you can't go anywhere else for free to rent facilities at, you know, at that person's cost. So I didn't know what people's opinions were on the numbers that are on the sheet. At least we have to start someplace on what we want to do and charge for.
Jeff, you want to send that out and people can review that?
I mean, the numbers that you saw, are they too high, too low?
I haven't seen them.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I thought I made a copy, that was my fault. So basically, it was like any ball field with lights was a hundred dollar usage. If it did not have lights, it was, it was a fifty dollar, uh, fifty, uh, fifty dollar usage. Like, for example, uh, nothing against the youth football team, but when they're out at Hamilton practicing for the month of October, that was a nine hundred dollar electric bill that the city paid for. Yes, Randy?
Yeah, um, Randy, here, I just wanted to, I came in and asked about the electric bills and, um, Jeff pulled up the electric bills. I think you need to have an audit of your electric boxes because in December of last year, the Persing Field was four hundred dollars. Now, I don't know why that is, but that's an extreme amount of money for one field when that ball field's not being used. Also, a couple of the other fields, they were like in excess of two hundred dollars. I mean, you really need to have them checked why they're so high at that time of the year. That's a big question in my mind.
Okay, I mean, we could do that. I mean, I don't, I don't think anyone has an issue with that, but either way, I mean, if someone's using the field, I think they're...
And I, I'm in agreement with that, uh, but also the other thing is, is who are you charging the fees for? Because the high school already does pay to use the fields.
Correct, yes.
Uh, Little League does not pay necessarily, but they do an extreme amount of maintenance on the fields that's not being done by the city. So we have to take all that into consideration.
So what if someone's having like a tournament, does...
Okay, well, that, you know, outside groups.
The field's seven seventy-three.
Well, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that at all. I'm just saying, but you can't go anywhere else and it's not given to you free. Like, for example, I'm just giving an example, like, if I want to go down to use the football stadium, there's a fee because still things have to be regularly maintained. Things have to be cleaned up. Like, for example, like, if somebody needs, it's just, these things have to be taken care of, regardless if anyone's using it or not. And like, you can't go somewhere else and get something for free. There's always some type of fee just to cover the cost of the manpower for this to regular maintenance or eventually things do need to be improved or fixed. And we, and there has to be at least some type of, I'm not saying we have to charge them so they go broke, but there has to be something to cover the cost of it being used.
That's what I'm try, what I'm trying to say is, I haven't seen what fees you set because nothing was discussed with Parks and Rec as far as that. Because I was, that's why I went in to check on electric bills and all that kind of thing to see what we were looking at. And then, uh, some fees came up here tonight without any input as far as, you know, that discussion being, uh, who maintain, I mean, there's different groups that maintain fields. They do the mow, they're grass mowing themselves. They're doing improvements on the fields, that kind of thing. So I'm just saying you have, if you have trouble, guys come in there and they're using the fields, I understand. You know, but you have to really weigh some of this stuff as to what is being done.
No, I agree.
And who is using it? Um, and, you know, what they're utilizing. Because, you know, somebody said to me about, well, it costs money to close the road. No, not if the road closures are there and they're pulling them out.
But someone had to go up there, put them there, someone has to go up and pick them up. Though, I thought all those things cost money at the normal daily routine of what our departments do.
But we're keeping them down there now. The road closure things are being kept down there. So when they're, they're used, then they won't be pulled out. For that kind of thing. I'm just saying, all these pros and cons need to be weighed.
No, no, I, no, I agree, but I still think there has to be some type of fee. I think that the fee has to be determined sooner rather than later because everything's been given away for free for the last how many years? And, you know, if you go, like I said, anywhere, everyone's charging a fee. You just can't go somewhere for free and say, well, I'll clean up. I'll make sure everything's nice when I leave. There's still a fee regardless, just to have, just to use the facility. So that's, that's what I'm saying, just to use the facility, there's still a fee. I'm not saying we have to charge them a crazy amount, but no matter where you go, there's always a fee just to use the facility itself.
And, and I'm in agree, I'm in agreement of, of certain things. But then, well, what I'm saying is we need to look at who's utilizing those fields, who is already doing repairs and maintenance and that kind of thing for that. We have to take all of that into consideration.
And in a sense, this isn't just for the field, it's like...
Uh, yeah.
And it's for, like, it's for everything, like, you know, the picnic pavilion, the court discovery. It's, you know, using, you know, the park when they need to use picnic tables and spiders and all those types of things, when people want to use the event trailer. Like, that's not just for the field. It's just, it's for, like, we have to get a fee for everything because people come in, they use stuff, they damage it, it doesn't come back, and the city's eating that cost. And everyone knows the cost of stuff isn't going down, it's only going up then. You know, we have to do something.
And just another one was the OPG. There was an electric fee for that and I'm like, well, what? Because the OPG, uh, ball field isn't used. So where is that coming from? Yeah, I mean, I just think an audit of some kind needs to be taken care of because why are the, why are those...
I mean, yeah, we can look at it, we can have people, I'll check it. But you think by next council meeting, which is two weeks, a little bit more than that, you could get some type of idea for this field because, you know, we can't go another year in twenty twenty-five without having any fees in place.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion items, anyone? All right?
I'm just gonna send, I'm just gonna send that out so we can just like...
Yeah, I'll send on, yeah, send it out. Yeah, and like I said, these are just things that I know that, it was like picnic tables, chair, garbage cans, trash bags, the event trailer, road closure.
Just so we can kind of, or back and forth, my needs and...
Yeah, because it's like anywhere out there, like, just to use the facility, it, it, it's just, you know, it's this cost. And, you know, if you want, you know, everything afterward, this additional cost, we need to start doing those things because...
This was talked about, like, a year ago?
This was talked about for a long time. Yeah, so, okay, we'll get that sent out if anyone's adding anything, but something has to be put in there. Any other discussions for anyone? All right, there are a few announcements. We are accepting, uh, the bottling butters for the different boards. Social Service for a three-year term, Housing Authority for a five-year term, Redevelopment Authority for a four-year term, Zoning Hearing Board for a three-year term, Planning Commission, uh, for a four-year term, Municipal Authority for a five-year term, Har, Must Be Reddish of Architect, Recreation Board for a four-year term, Board of Appeals for a four-year term, Shade Tree Commission for a five-year term.
Do we, do we, how many, like, are available?
Oh, right next to it, it says like, if there's, like, for example, next to the zoning, there's two, planning, there's three, municipal authorities, two, harpers, two.
Oh, I see the end.
Yeah, it like blends into a whole number.
Yeah.
All right, the following events will be coming up here in the city. Uh, Santa Parade and the tree lighting will take place at Cameron Park on the twenty-ninth at five P M. Uh, North Norman County Historic Society Open House is December fourth from one to seven. Cereal with Santa and How the Grinch Go Christmas at the Albright is December seventh at nine A M. Century Friendly Santa at the Santa House is on December eighth at ten A M. Ugly Sweater Contest at the Rink. Ice Rink is on December twenty-ninth at four P M. New Year's Eve Celebration at the Rink in Cameron Park will be on December thirty-first. The next council meeting will take place here on December ninth at six fifteen P M. And at this time, is there any public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir.
Alan, uh, I have a question about some of these, uh, nuisances that are on the list. For instance, uh, Packer Street, Edison Avenue, uh, Susquehanna Avenue. These are all streets, their addresses are in the construction though, for a name. It all means the construction, including, uh, some form of problem.
Mister Bub, um, if you'd like to come down and see what is in the resolutions, you may see that and what the complaints were. That way, that'll make it easiest, that way it's coming exactly out, him or not.
I will do that. And some of them properties that are on the nuisance list are also of the nuisance abatement ordinance.
Yeah. Is that how we answer your question, sir?
Yeah, that's why I see that list.
All right.
What the objections are.
All right. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir.
Uh, Joe Bartelo. I just, I just had a question on the ordinance one oh six. What, what was that, what, what was amended?
That was the amusement, amusement ordinance. We discussed that in council meetings.
At the last meeting.
Yeah. And like I said, there's a cop, there's copies of these things out of the code office. If you want to see a hard copy to see the exact changes, you may do that as well.
All right.
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir.
Jerome. I think it'd be good to start with work sessions and bring it up about different ordinances that you're proposing in other matters before it comes to voting. People don't know what this stuff is. And we're passing ordinances, so you're passing the orders, it's not... No one has an idea what they are all up there about. And that's not the way you should be working. People should have an input into it, what you want, and so on. There's nobody here that is that smart that can come up with all the answers to every ordinance. And it's good to have people come in here and speak and discuss their opinions. It shouldn't just be a debate between you five. It should be a debate with the citizens, saying to you whether this is a good or bad. Not everybody knows what's best for everybody. So we've talked about work sessions before. What are advertisements?
Well, they had to be advert, they had to be advert...
We did advertise it.
No, you need to, you need to have an agenda for what you're going to speak about at the work session. You just couldn't shoot off the fly of the cup. For example, let's say, for the example, we're gonna talk about budget. Okay, we couldn't talk about anything else but the budget. So we can't come in at the swing of our pants and say, works that...
But can't we just say it's for general purposes? I mean, school district does it all the time. County does it all the time. They come up and they say, we're gonna...
No, so what the school district does is they, their agenda is based off of their, their work session is based off of the meeting. So if these ordinances are on that meeting, you can use that as a...
That's right.
All right.
It's an option. Another option is, because Controller Alex, I agree with you. I think that we should have work sessions and open the discourse. But I think another option too is if we don't want to go with the agenda style, you have departmental style. So, you know, at the, at other governmental institutions, you have, uh, you know, not one, and then you have election, do other things come in and then get those things all in the review.
So could you, Joel, this may be a question for you. So could we just say work session and have every department listed? And then at that point, okay, for the police department, for example, these are the things I'm going to talk about. Or do you need to have a specific item saying, I want to talk about, for example, the K nine?
I think you could get away with the...
The generalization.
The generalization, I think it'd be better if you had the specific.
Okay. So if you know, for example, if this say, for me, if you know ahead of time, okay, I want to talk about the K nine and crime watch, put that in there. Okay.
Or even, ma'am, maybe to your suggestion, if we have a list of our departments and then each work session agenda just changes as we, we can itemize or enumerate items to come up under that department.
Yeah.
Put that each one there on the blanket form.
Yeah, I don't think you should, you pass it in order without having a public input into it. I mean, I don't think it's a good business.
I think, if, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but when Kirk Hugelwisch was mayor, he wanted to have one meeting a month as the voting meeting and the other meeting was going to be discussion about specific items and how it was gonna be voted.
Well, we kind of did that and then it got to the point, well, I forgot to put this on, it's an emergency, but I need a vote on it.
Yeah, correct.
I needed, then I went away.
It went away pretty quick.
But then we didn't, we never, we never followed it.
Correct. It did go away pretty quick.
So maybe we'll just do that, we'll advertise. Do you just want to do it once a month? Or do you want to do a...
Do you want to be single? Work session, first, first meeting?
That's what I said, do you want to, because we never, we never scheduled them for twenty twenty-five. I said, do you want to do that now and say, all right, schedule them for twenty twenty-five? That way we're not advertising every month because it costs money. Francis, thanks. But...
I just feel like we advertise them every, for, for three months.
So, Joel, we can, how should we advertise that?
Should we just do work session and just do the, each department and then when...
I mean, and then we do an agenda based off of that department?
And you publish the agenda...
Yeah, like we would, like we would for me. Okay, all right.
We can get a list of those dates for the next council meeting and say, these are to be the work session dates at five P M. Good suggestion, Controller Alex.
The other one is, is that we should be looking at employee and employment policies concerning those things. One is vehicle diseases. One is vehicle diseases, so don't anticipate situationally, and two, be sure to be very clear about what things, how things are supposed to be, which gives city clerk, yeah, to get to know each other, and something that... It's a black and white, but it's very clear about how things are supposed to be.
Public comment, sir?
You lost me on the work session, five o'clock before voting meeting, or you're doing it a week?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be the first meeting of the month at 5:00 PM.
And then it'll be a week, so...
No, 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 we're still going to have, we're still going to have two voting meetings a month. One of the meetings will have a work session, so the work session will be the first Monday of each month, like, we kind of had it this year, is that right?
Not first Monday, but like...
I mean, excuse me, the first meeting, the first meeting of the month at 5:00, to discuss whatever any department wants to discuss.
So if it's, you know, second Monday at 5:00 PM, and 6:15, all right, we're meeting. You seem like you're still confused, like the way you're shaking your head.
Okay, so the first meeting of every month is at 6:15, so prior to that meeting, there will be a work session, and each department at that point in time, for example, if John with Code, under Code, he say, all right, for these ordinance...
Then you can come back in an hour later and vote on it.
And vote on it.
Well, not, it can, it's up, it would be up to that individual council person, if he wants to vote on it that night, okay?
Yeah, that defeats the purpose of a work.
Correct. I'm not disagreeing with you, but that's how, that's how we, for lack of a term, that's how we do it, I mean, if we're going to stick to the code, if we don't discuss it at the work session, we're not going to vote on it? Like, if we're not going to follow what we're going to say, it doesn't do much good.
Can't we just bring everything to the work session in the beginning of the month, and then know that here's what we need to work out, and then we'll vote on those things that we talked about at the beginning of the month at our second meeting?
I mean, we can, but are we going to actually honor that? So, for example, if we don't talk about it at that meeting, are we going to say, oh, man, I forgot to add this to talk about, I need to vote on it tonight, but we never discussed it?
So, for example, tonight, Joe, back there, asked a question on what this ordinance was.
Correct.
How they do? General public doesn't know. Why don't we pass some ordinances, it doesn't matter what department it is, that people don't know about, and then we're going to say we're going to enforce it? Instead of getting input from the public, saying whether this is good or this is bad, or we may not agree with this.
Well, yeah, that's why we're going to have the work session now.
But if you have the work session, and then it's on the agenda for that meeting...
It doesn't matter, right?
It doesn't matter.
You've got people...
Well, then, I mean, that's fine, like, it just goes up to that department to, I'm just saying, if it's John, because his, you know, his majority ordinance is...
So I know this would add another, add another meeting, but...
Correct.
But usually, it's, if you're going to have it on that Monday before, then the following Monday would be your meeting, so you have that time...
Correct, yeah.
...for somebody to do it. So just be like that, you're just adding another to the meeting, just like the school district. Just like anybody, just like, you guys have it days before, your work, your work sessions are days before, and then that way, people have the chance in that time. If you have one at 5:00, and you're voting on it at 6:00...
Yeah, what are they going to go back to? Are we going to honor what we say we're going to do, and that's what it goes back to?
If you advertise it, you're going to have...
No, no, I meant like, are we going to, at this stage, we're going to talk about the ordinance at 5:00, it's up to the individuals, say, all right, I'm going to wait to the following meeting to vote on it, that's what I'm saying, like, we have to honor what we're going to say.
But if you only have that work session the week before, you can't vote on anything until the next one.
Oh, I figured on having the work session in a regular meeting, because...
No, that's what we're saying, that's where you're kind of defeating the purpose, right?
No, I'm just saying, some of the stuff, like, we got to pay bills, like, some of this, like, the stuff we're talking about should not be...
So you have an extra meeting.
Yeah, you're just adding an extra meeting.
You're saying have that, this meeting the first Monday of every month, then by the second meeting...
By the time your regular meeting is...
The following week, we were ready to vote on, because it was able to go out to the public and digest it, look at it, comment, and so on, so forth.
Well, why don't, why don't we just do it like we did, like, have a council meeting prior, I mean, the work session prior, but everything in the work session can't be voted on until the next month, like, the next two weeks later down the road?
That would be, that'd be fine.
That's what I'm saying.
Same difference.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, rather than, okay, we're going to come on Monday, and then come the next Monday, and then come two weeks later, to do it that...
Well, I think I can solve the problem of us abating or abiding by what that rule would be, because if we do an agenda for the work session, saying we're going to pass, we're going to talk about ordinance 106, and we don't put on the agenda for the following meeting that we're going to pass, we're going to have the first reading for agenda 106, then we can't have the first reading for agenda 106. So you can still have a voting meeting that evening, you just wouldn't be able to vote on what was discussed at the work session, because it's not on for...
Correct, yeah.
So that would all get in. So you could do it the same night, but it wouldn't be voted on until the next week.
Correct, right.
Okay.
But, well said, Joel, well said.
Yeah, I mean, that gives people an opportunity to vote, I mean, that's the whole purpose of this. Good question, it is not anything to be discussed, we're still having a work session.
Yeah, because advertised, every time we advertise it, it costs money.
That's my point.
Yeah.
What are we going to, sit here for an hour?
Well, I think you'll always have one, right?
We'll always have something to talk about.
But John, yes, we always have one. But there's always something, you, there's...
Or just a general...
There's always something to talk about.
I mean, can I just add, especially with, if you're working on a change to an ordinance, that just doesn't happen overnight, right? That doesn't just come up all of a sudden, so that's something that's really amenable to, having a work session at least a week or two before you're actually planning to vote on it, or have the first meeting. The other thing is, not everybody's going to be able to attend your, your work sessions, and I think it would be very helpful if you would be a little bit more explicit on the agenda, or when you bring the item up for a vote, this is a vote on the change to ordinance 106, that is, the amusement, whatever ordinance, and this proposed change is going to make it easier for us to charge the fee, or collect the fee, whatever the purpose is, your, what your change is, what your rationale for the change is, and that way, people in the audience can understand your process, and your thought process for wanting to do the change at all, even if they haven't attended a work session. But also, if part of the agenda is a little bit more explicit, when you ask for the comments at the beginning of the meeting on agenda items, then people can have the opportunity to ask the questions before you vote on it at that meeting. But just having on there ordinance 106 means nothing is not, is not inviting participation from your constituents.
I agree, I totally agree. The other thing I would recommend is that, we spend money on things, so we don't use them, okay? We have a smart cover up here, why don't, why don't we put the agenda on there, so people can see it, that's sitting here?
I remember doing that at one point.
I mean, why do we buy something and not use it?
We used to have a slideshow that would have big details on each agenda item displayed up there, that people could see.
And at least people would know what's, what's going on there. We spent money for nothing.
I'm not going to disagree with that one.
Three good ideas.
Yeah. And can we see your records now online?
The ones we just...
The ones that normally, they're, they're on the database, they're...
Oh, yeah, they're, yeah, they're on, they're on the E-code, yeah.
They're in the E-code.
Sundar E-code, 360.
Yeah, plus if you go in the, go in the search engine, you type in, the link will come up.
Yeah, everyone AFL sees it on the...
I mean, the agenda's ought to be a little more defined, you know, a little more information than just a line sentence, but, but from a...
And tinier font. So you put it all on one page, it's easy.
Yeah, font plus color, I don't disagree.
But honestly, you would have to have, you know, this paper, if you put it up in the stronghold.
Any other public comment at this time? Any other pub, please state your name, sir?
It might be helpful to have a copy of the ordinance here, so people can pick it up before the meeting, get here, or when you're at the meeting, and look it over, so you know what's being talked about.
A lot of trees, a good idea.
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir.
Rick Schmeres, Sundar Fire Department, I just want to thank the council for allocating $25,000 on reserve fund, we are moving forward with consolidation at this point, we're working on our lend lease agreements, we restructure some of the language, hopefully next month or year, legally, we have a new corporation, we just have to, they already started moving assets over, so hopefully that'll continue to move forward, you know, with current changes. Thank you.
What's the name of it again? What, what's the name of the corporation again?
Sundar Regional Volunteer Fire Rescue. Okay, it was a voting thing.
What's going on with the rescues now?
The only knowledge I have is that their social club is closed, but they're trying to keep their fire apparatus in service.
Does that, will that affect the consolidation at all, or...
Certainly. I, I sent them a letter, or I think I emailed you guys a copy, sending a column or something, saying, if you'd like to discuss this with us, maybe we could get together and see what we can work out, if anything, we could help them. So we made them an offer, and it's unfortunate, the downfall of the independently operated franchise that I've adopted, each club does their own thing, so we'll have to see if they respond to that. They have been sending work assignments to consolidation meetings, so we'll have to see what they do with that, they may just decide, no, you know, as Wade was quoted to say, it's in the hands of the lawyers, which I understand, so we'll have to see what they do, but those assets there, minus the relief and the city hose, are all theirs, so...
If they ain't got no money, they can't give no money.
Yeah, so, I mean, they were worried about making payments, whatnot, so now, you know, this was all club business, so now it's all come to light, we'll have to see what they're going to do, there's maybe one less entity going into the new entity.
Which is going to be the worst, or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Plus minus.
Any other public comment at this time? All right, George, just a minute.